So we'll be revising characteristics and classification of living organisms. This is chapter one. Yeah, so this is the syllabus for exams in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Uh so we have characteristics of living organisms. After that, we have concept and uses of classification systems. The next we have features of organisms. Let's start with characteristics. Uh we basically have seven characteristics and they are movement, respiration, sensitivity, growth, uh reproduction, expiration and nutrition. Uh and we have this demonic right here, Mrs. Green to remember the characteristics at their uh movement, respiration, sensitivity, growth, reproduction, expiration and nutrition. So yeah, Mrs. Green and let's go through all of the characteristics. Now, number one is movement. It's an action by an organism or part of an organism causing a change of position or place. And yeah, basically when you move from one place to another, you change your position, et cetera. That's about it. And then next you have respiration. Uh respiration, uh the chemical reactions that break down nutrient molecules in living cells to release energy for metabolism. So basically, uh the energy released, right? It's used for uh chemical reactions in the cells. It's used there, so you use the energy. And the next you have sensitivity. It's the ability to detect or sense stimuli in the internal or external environment and make appropriate responses. Um may uh an example we could take is a touch me not leave. So whenever you touch it, it closes its leaves, right? Yeah, that's how it works. That's sensitivity. It's it's ability to detect and then uh set uh detect or sense the stimuli and then respond to it. Uh the next one we have growth. It's a permanent increase in size and dry mass by an increase in cell number or cell size or both. And I don't think this needs further explanation. Yeah. Uh next we have reproduction processes that make more of the same kind of organism. Uh next we have extraction. It's the removal from organisms of toxic materials, the waste products of metabolism, uh which is the chemical reactions in the cells, including respiration. And also substances and access of requirements. Also note, uh ingestion is not extraction. Uh there's this mistake which is made a lot where you know people take, people think that ingestion is excretion and they write an exam, you lose marks for that. So passing out P C's is not excretion. Uh yeah, next we have nutrition. It's the taking in of materials for energy, growth and development. Plants require light, carbon dioxide, water and ions. Animals need organic compounds, ions and also need water. Basically, you would take in the required nutrients for uh for performing your tasks and et cetera. Yeah. I hope that was clear. Do we have any questions? Then I'll I'll go ahead. Yeah, now we have the biological classification system. Uh classification means putting things into groups. Uh classification system aim to reflect evolutionary relationships and biologists try to classify organisms according to how closely they think they are related. Example, all mammals are related because they all share a relatively recent common ancestor. Uh same goes for any other uh group example fishes. Yeah, fishes are also related because they share a relatively recent common ancestor. And a common ancestor is a species that is that has lived in the past and is thought to have given rise to several different species alive today. And when we classify organisms, we look for features that they share with others, which suggest that they're related to one another. Uh in the past, right, uh biologists used to uh go for morphology to classify. But in the recent times, uh that's not been. Oh yes, I I have the I have the session open for doubts and help. Yeah, I I do have it. Yeah. And yeah, I was talking about morphology, right? So to classify organisms in the past, biologists uh used to um uh use morphology to classify organisms in the past. But right now, that's uh that's not really uh used anymore. D N A base sequencing is much more more used. Next we have species. Species is defined as a group of organisms that can reproduce to produce fertile offspring. Also, species is the smallest group into which biologists classify organisms. Species can they classified into organism, sorry, into groups by the features that they share. Example, all mammals have uh bodies covered in hair. Um they feed young from mammary glands and they have external layers, finna. And yeah, species. Next we have the binomial naming system. Uh binomial naming system is a system of naming species uh that is internationally agreed in which the scientific name is made up of two parts, the genus and the species. First you have the genus and then you have the species. Uh the first name in the binomial is the name of the genus that the organism belongs to. A genus is a group of species that are related to one another. So when you're writing uh a name uh in the binomial system, right? Uh let's say this is the genus. And then you have species. Here, right, the genus should or the first letter of the genus should always be in a capital letter here. And then further you you have a space and then species should be in lower uh lowercase, everything. Yeah. The next one, organisms were class first classified by a Swedish naturalist called Linus in a way that allows this subdivision of living organisms into smaller and more specialized groups. The species in these groups have uh more and more features in common, the more subdivided they get. Uh he named organisms in Latin, uh you Latin using the binomial system. When the scientific uh name of an organism is made of two parts, starting with the genus, always given a capital letter. The first letter is always the capital, uh is always in capital and followed by the species, starting with a lowercase letter. And also when typed, binomial names are always in italics. This indicates that they're Latin. And when you're uh uh when it's handwritten, uh you don't have to write it in italics. Yeah, just the homo sapiens, yeah, let's write this, right? Um you have homo and then a space, lowercase, the genus, uh sorry, sapiens. Yeah. And the sequence of classification is kingdom, phylum, class, order, family, genus and species. Also, is is everything clear? Because I don't see any doubts. Uh do we have any doubt, any questions? Okay, okay. Uh am I going to, oh yeah, uh we have a question. If we have an organism with a species name X and genus name Y, we have two other organisms, such as species A and genus Y. And other organism um with the species X and genus B, which of these two are more closely related? Same, sorry. I didn't really quite get that question, but right now since we're in the middle of the session, uh I think it'll take time for me to actually answer. So I'll I'll reply to you after the session maybe. Yeah, we have another question. My teacher says instead of italics for species, they should underline if that needed or not. I don't think that's needed because uh uh because I think, wait, let me show you the syllabus. One minute. Yeah, here's the syllabus. Describe the binomial system of naming species. Um I don't think underlining is required. Underlining isn't very required. You just, uh when you type it, you need to put it in italics. Ah yes, we use binomial system when we talk about species name. Yeah, so should we continue or do we have any more questions? And yes, you are not required to underline an I G C S E. So should I continue explaining or uh do we have any more questions? Okay, I'll go ahead. Yeah, the sequence of classification is kingdom, phylum, class, order, family, genus and species. Here I have an example for this red fox, vulpis vulpis. If you've done the past year questions, uh vulpis vulpis comes very often in in the questions. Yeah, you don't have to memorize it though. Yeah. Now kingdom, we have animalia, this is the animal kingdom, phylum, caudata. Class is mammalia, order is carnivora, family is canidae, genus is vulpis and species vulpis vulpis. Yeah. And I'll go the next slide. Dichotomous keys, uh dichotomous key is a way of identifying an organism by working through pairs of statements that lead you to its name. This comes very often in paper too. If you're taking extended, yeah, paper two, this comes, no, not paper two, paper four, yeah, theory. This comes very often if you're taking extended, comes in code as well. But for paper four, you definitely have a question from this. Yeah. And D N A base sequencing, as I was, I as I mentioned this previously, for classification, this is more used now instead of morphology. Yeah, the sequences of bases in D N A are used as a mean of classification. Groups of organisms which share more recent ancestor are are more closely related, have base sequences in D N A that are more similar than those that share only a distant ancestor. Studies of D N A sequences of different species uh show that uh the more similar the base sequences in the D N A of two species, the more closely related those two species are. And the more recent in time their common ancestor is. This means that base sequences in uh mammals' D N A uh are more closely related to all other mammals than to any vert other vertebrate groups. Do we have any doubts for this topic or the previous one? I didn't see any response, so I'll go ahead with the next slide. Yeah. Now kingdoms, kingdoms are one of the major groups into which all organisms are classified. There are five live uh kingdoms into which organisms are classified into. Sorry, there's a typo here, I typed not. I was in a hurry, so I accidentally typed not, but it's into, let me just make it clear. Yeah, and we have five kingdoms, that is animal kingdom, land kingdom, fungus kingdom, protocyst kingdom and prokaryote kingdom. You need to be familiar with all five. Uh basically, you just need to be uh, you need to be uh able to remember all the characteristic features of each particular kingdom. Now let's go with the animal kingdom. The characteristic features of all animals is that their cells have a nucleus, but no cell walls or chloroplasts. Cell walls or chloroplasts are present in uh plant cells. And animals feed on organic substances made by other living organisms and they're multicellular, meaning that they have more than one cell, they are, they have more cells, many cells. Plant kingdom, the characteristic features of all plants are that uh cells are multicellular. Uh their cells have a nucleus and the cell wall is made up of cellulose and often contain chloroplasts. So chloroplasts, uh their function, um you you know the function, right? Or do I need to explain that? Can I get some response please? Okay, you want me to explain? Okay. Yeah, so um chloroplasts are more oftenly present in a plant kingdom, uh plant uh in the plant cells, right? So chloroplasts contain chlorophyll which uh take energy from the sunlight. They absorb energy from, light energy from uh the sun and they convert it into um. Yeah, they they take the energy from the sunlight and it's used in the photosynthesis processes when they're making food. Yeah. That's why chloroplasts are present. Chlorophyll is present in chloroplasts and uh they they absorb light energy. Yeah. And they feed by photosynthesis, planting uh plants are fed by photosynthesis and they may have roots, stems and leaves, but some plants do not have these organs. Chloroplasts uh present in all plant cells, uh yes, they are. Can you please tell what is photosynthesis? Oh, they related the message. Root hair cells, yeah, a root hair cells, I don't think all plants have it, some have it and some do not. You can see it, right? They may have roots, stems and leaves, but some plants do not have these organs, not all have root hair cells. So should I go to the next slide or what is the explanation here or should I explain again? Uh yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, so yeah, now we have fungus kingdom. The characteristic features of fungi are they are usually multicellular, but some such as yeast are unicellular, so there's both unicellular and multicellular. And they have nuclei and cell walls, but the walls are not made up of cellulose. And uh cellular cell walls are mainly present in plant cells. And yeah, fungus fungi do not have chlorophyll. They feed by digesting waste, organic material and absorbing into their cells. And also fungus are known to be decomposers, they feed sapiphytically and parasitically. Yeah. And any doubts? I see someone is typing, I'm gonna wait for them. What are the cell wall of fungus made of? I don't think that's required because uh it's not in the textbook also, so and you uh it's not needed, you don't need to know it. Oh yes, I will share the uh presentation in I G Biology uh channel. You're welcome, you're welcome. Yeah. Uh yeah, but I think, yeah, it's not in the syllabus. Uh the what uh fungi cell walls are made up of, it's not in the syllabus, you don't need to know it. You just have to know that plant cell walls are made up of cellulose and fungus cell walls are not made up of cellulose. Now we have the protocyst kingdom. The characteristic features of protocyst is that they are multicellular or unicellular. And um their cells have a nucleus and may or may not have a cell wall and chloroplasts. So cell wall, uh their cell walls have a nucleus and may or may not have a cell wall and chloroplasts. Some feed by photosynthesis and others feed on organic substances made by other organisms. Yeah. Um so chloroplasts are present in protocyst. Yeah. Some protocysts have chloroplasts present in them. Any doubts? Is there any feature that is unique to protocyst? Hmm. Uh example of this kingdom. Uh I don't think examples are also required for uh protocyst. Seaweed, yeah, as you can see in the picture, seaweed, yes. And yeah, should I go to the next slide? I'm gonna go to the next slide because there's no response. Now we have the prokaryote kingdom, the characteristic features of prokaryotes, they're usually unicellular, meaning that only one sing, they're single-celled organisms. They don't have more than one cell. And they have no nucleus, they have cell walls not made up of cellulose again. Uh they have no mitochondria, they have a circular loop of D N A which is free in the cytoplasm and they often have plasmines. Yeah, is that clear or do we have any doubt? Plasmines, uh one minute, I'll tell you what a plasmin is. Um. Yeah, uh we have the picture right here, I'll I'll zoom in and show it to you. Wait just a minute. Here you can see this, right, plasmin? This is the plasmin. It's circular D N A. Uh should I go to the next slide? Yeah, it's for D N A modification, yeah, for genetic modification, you use the plasmines. But what would be the, so it's like a chromosome but circular. It's D N A but circular. But what would be the difference between a loop of D N A and plasmin? I don't think that you're you're required to know that for now, in the syllabus it's not mentioned, so. Should I go to the next slide? I I mean, these questions I'm not answering because I never got to know because that was not in the syllabus. So yeah. Do prokaryotes have nucleus? No, they have no nucleus, prokaryotes do not have nucleus. But they do have D N A though. Circular loops of D N A and plasmines. Yeah, you're welcome. I'll go to the next slide. Groups within the animal and plant kingdom, now in the kingdoms we have groups as well. Now, yeah, vertebrates, uh they are groups within the animal kingdom. Vertebrates and arthropods are uh groups within the uh animal kingdom. Yeah, vertebrates are animals that have backbone. These are the uh most familiar animals and the groups are fish, amphibians, reptiles, birds and mammals. Arthropods, arthropods are animals with jointed legs but no backbone. They have a waterproof exoskeleton. There are several different groups of arthropods, including insects, crustaceans, arachnids and myriapods. Vertebrates. Yeah, we have fish first, uh the characteristic features of fish is that they are vertebrates, but with scaly skin. They have gills throughout their life and it's a respiratory organ by the way, gills. They have fins, their eggs have no shells and are laid in water. Amphibians, the characteristic features of amphibians are they are vertebrates with skin, uh with no scales though. Their eggs have no shells and are laid in water. The tadpoles live in water, but adults often live on land. Tadpoles have give gills for gas exchange, but adults have lungs as they grow, yeah. And also amphibians go through this uh process of uh just remember what is, what is it called? Yeah, metamorphosis, it's changing from a larva with one body form to an adult with a different body form. So I guess that explains how they have gills, tadpoles have gills, but the adults have lungs. Yeah, so should I go to the next slide? Do we have any doubts or questions? Do do they breathe through the skin? Uh. Um they um. I'm not so sure, but I think earthworms do, earthworms do. Earthworms do. Frogs, uh I'm not very sure. Do they keep their gills orders? Metamorphosis get rid of them as they grow. Uh I think they eventually grow into lungs. Do we have any more questions or shall we move to the next topic? Okay, sure. Now we have reptiles, uh the characteristic features of reptiles, they're vertebrates with scaly skin and they lay eggs with the soft shells. And they're mainly present on uh, they they're present on land and as well as water. And birds, the characteristic features of birds, they have feathers and also sometimes a few scales. They have a beak, their front two limbs are wings, though not all birds can fly. Sorry, there's a typo here again. Yeah. Uh so yeah, not all birds can fly, they lay eggs with hard shells. Uh do we have any questions for this topic, any doubts? Is laying egg a physical property of bird? Can you please give an example of birds with scales? Um I I I personally don't know any birds with scales, but you just need to know that there are a few birds with scales. That's what's mentioned in the textbook. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, now we have mammals, uh the characteristic features of mammals are they they have fur, fur slash hair on their skin. They're young, develop in a uterus attached to the mother by a placenta. Uh the females have mammary glands which produce milk to feed their young. They have different kinds of teeth. I think you can uh check more about teeth in the seventh chapter. They have a finna, ear flap, ear flap on the outside of the body, they have said gland, sweat glands in the skin and they have a diaphragm. Do we have any uh doubts? Do you do you want me to any, do you want me to explain anything about this? Okay, so should I move to the next topic? Okay. Now we come to arthropods, uh these are part of the animal kingdom as well, a group within it. Um and uh yeah, we have insects. Uh the characteristic features of insects is that they are arthropods with three pairs of jointed legs. They have two pairs of wings, they breathe through tubes called trachea and their body is divided into three parts, head, thorax and abdomen and they have one pair of antenna. And you need to be able to remember all of these, uh that's what the syllabus says as well. All these characteristic features, they're commonly asked and then yeah, we move on to crustaceans. Uh the characteristic feature for the crustaceans is that they are arthropods with more than four pairs of jointed legs and they have two pairs of antenna. An example is a crab. Do and lobsters also. Do we have any questions? Do all insect have wings? Yeah, they do. Yeah, they do. But I don't think ants can be classified as insects. Uh are they myriapods or insects? Wait, let me just actually search that out. Yes, I I just found out that they're insects. So yes, some may have, some may not have things. Do we have any more questions? You see my screen, no? Okay, okay, then I'll start presenting again. Yeah, can everyone hear me now? So I, yes, I'll stop presenting now. Yeah, can you see the presentation? Okay. Yeah, yeah, so we were discussing about Arthropods, yeah. Uh arachnids, the charac- characteristic features of them are they are Arthropods with four pairs of jointed legs. Their body is divided into two parts, it's the phallic thorax and abdomen and they have no antennae. Uh myriapods, the characteristic features are their body consists of many similar segments, each of their body segment has jointed legs. And they have one pair of antenna, I, yeah. And do we have any doubts? No, okay, then should I go ahead or should I explain more? Should I go ahead with the next topic or is there more explanation needed? Okay. Now we come to the plant kingdom groups. First we have ferns, ferns are plants with leaves called fronds, uh the charac- characteristic features are. They are plants with roots, stem and leaves, which is ferns, and they do not produce flowers. So it's a non-flowering uh plant. And they reproduce by spores produced on the underside of their fronds. And flowering plants, the characteristics is that they are plants with roots, stems and leaves. They reproduce using flowers and seeds whereas ferns reproduce using uh fronds. And flowering plants, their seeds are produced inside an ovary in the flowers. Fronds, uh yeah, uh you see their leaves, right? Um the leaves are called the fronds. These leaves right here, right, they they are called fronds. How exactly? So there's something called uh spores and these spores are produced on the underside of these fronds. And yeah, they reproduce using those spores, by them actually. Something like fungi. Uh not really like fungi. Asexual, yes, because no seeds are actually used. Can everyone hear me? Yeah. Spore is is a method in asexual reproduction. Yeah, so should I go ahead with the next topic? Now we have flowering, now flowering plants are actually of two types, they are dicotyledons and monocotyledons. Uh dicotyledons are usually uh. Uh they have seeds with two cotyledons and they usually have a main root with side roots coming out from it. Their leaves have a network of veins, they have flower plant, flower parts, example petals in multiples of four or five. And there are vascular bundles in the stem arranged in a ring, monocots, they have seeds with one cotyledon. Their root grows out directly from the stem, um and their leaves have parallel veins. They have flower parts, which is petals in multiples of three and they have vascular bundles in the stem arranged randomly. Uh there's this diagram here, monocots and dicots. Uh here you have a single cotyledon in monocot and two cotyledons in dicot. The uh the leaf is long and narrow and uh. Parallel veins for monocot, dicot it's a broad leaf and there's a network of veins, whereas for monocot you have parallel veins. And in monocots the vascular bundles are scattered, um and in dicot the vascular bundles are in a ring. And monocots the flower parts are in multiples of three, dicots flower parts are in uh, sorry, floral parts are in multiples of four or five. Do we have any questions, any doubts? No, okay, so was the explanation clear? Okay, yeah, uh and the last topic is viruses, uh you just need to know that they're not classified in any of the five kingdoms. And you need to know that they're not living, uh they're they're not living things or living organisms. I'll just read it out, viruses are not classified in any of the five kingdoms as they do not show the characteristics of living organisms. They do not have cells and consist of genetic materials surrounded by a protein coat. And they're not actually living things but uh they need a host to, you know, to actually. Uh for them to reproduce, right, they need a host, they go into the, they go into the host body and then they become living. Um and yeah, that's pretty much about it, that's the whole chapter. Do we have any more questions? Do I need to explain more topics with everything? Covid, um you you don't, uh you have that in chapter ten but not in this chapter. Uh for this chapter syllabus, I'll show it to you guys again. Uh you just need to describe the characteristics of living organisms. Uh these are all of the seven characteristics along with their definitions. And the concept and uses of classification systems. Covid uh isn't mentioned in this chapter but in chapter ten, which is, wait, let me just open the textbook. Yeah, in chapter ten, diseases and immunity, you have a little bit, you just have a small section of it, yeah, diseases and immunity, chapter ten. You have, you learning about covid, just uh, you know, the safety precautions etcetera and. That's pretty much about it. It's not really uh that much. You can go through the tenth chapter, uh if you have the fourth edition IDCSB Biology textbook. Um it's on page two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eight. Yeah, generally for, yeah, general for mostly all virus, yeah. Yeah, I think that marks the end of this chapter. Do viruses have nucleus? No. They only have genetic material and it's surrounded by a protein coat. Yes, yes, genetic material. RNA, um you will have it in chapter sixteen. So um any more doubts, questions? Uh do you all wanna solve any MCQ questions? I have a PDF ready as well for this chapter. Okay, sure, I will start sharing that. Yeah, can you see my screen? I've I've shared this paper. Okay, so the question here is the image below is, below shows a house mouse whose scientific name is Masculus. Which genus does it belong to? It's not A, uh you need to identify the genus, it's just how we discussed about the binomial naming system. Genus and species, yeah, you're right, euphoru, it's C, it's Masse. And question two, which of the following would not be a characteristic seen in living organisms? I'll wait for the answer. D, you're right, for synthesis. Question three, uh which name can be given to a group of organisms that have. Similar morphological features and can reproduce successfully to produce fertile offspring? D, species, yeah, you're right, it's species. Um question four, a yeast, glucose and water are mixed in a test tube. The diagrams show the test tube at the start and after one hour, which process causes this change? B? Yeah, it, um. Yeah, it is respiration. So we'll go to the next question, which class of vertebrate typically gives birth to livya, uh to live young? Yeah, this is A, it's mammals. These were only five questions, so should I, uh should, do you guys want any more questions? Yeah, I I'm fine with, question five, okay, sure, I'll explain. Um and there's not much to explain though, if um mammals uh. Typically give birth to live young. Yeah, you're right, Sarish, don't it, B, C and D all lay eggs and mammals, uh yeah. They have the uterus present in them and they have mammary glands also, so. Yeah, you're welcome. So should I present more questions? No, okay. Yeah. No more questions, okay, you guys don't, or someone said yes. If you do, do you want me to present? If you do, do you want me to present MCQs or the theory questions? Is it possible to do a question involving the dichotomous key? Okay, sure, I will do dichotomous key questions. Yeah. Just give me a minute, I'm gonna open the PDF. Yeah, can everyone see my screen? These are all theory questions for this chapter. All living organisms, uh, show the same seven characteristics. They are listed below along with their definitions, match the characteristics and definitions by drawing lines between them on the diagram below. Yeah. So, will you guys give me the answers or should I go, or should I, um, solve it? Yes, nutrients is taking enough materials. Yes, I, 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 yeah, I'll wait for you, Bellmoon. Yeah, you're right. Excretion is the removal. Yeah, you're right, reproduction is making more, it's a process that makes more of the same kind of organism. Yeah, growth is a permanent increase in size. Sensitivity, yeah, you're right, ability to detect and respond to the changes. And respiration is the chemical reaction in the cells that break down nutrient molecules and release energy. Yeah, that's this, I think as the end of this question, should I move to the next question? Okay. Viruses are not classified as living organisms, suggests two characteristics of living organisms that viruses do not carry out. Respiration, excretion, yes, you're right, but it does carry out reproduction. So you can, uh, I think all the other six characteristics are applicable except for the, uh, reproduction. So I'll write the answer, respiration and excretion. Yeah, the next question. A student was investigating, uh, the growth of plants and their sensitivity to changes in light intensity. Table, table one shows the results, calculate the mean growth of the plant at a light intensity of twenty arbitrary units. Yeah, you just need to add all of them and find the average. Yeah, it is four point six. Yeah, next question, so your, uh, one is a photograph of a lion. Lions are mammals and have this scientific name, Panthera leo. One feature, yeah, fur body hair, that's right. Huh, and state the genus of this mammal. Panthera, yes, because in binomial, they have genus and species, so it's panthera. So let's go ahead with the next question. Mammals are one of the five groups of vertebrates. Can I say penne for the feature? Yeah, you can. Is laying egg a visible feature? Yeah, I, I'm not very sure about that, sorry. Yeah, mammals are one of the five groups of vertebrates. Some features of the three vertebrate groups are listed, identify the vertebrate groups. Lay soft-shelled eggs. Yeah, it's reptiles. Feathers, it's, do you, yeah, it's birds. Smooth and moist skin, it's amphibian, yeah. Next question, uh, figure two is a diagram of an animal cell, identify the parts labeled A, B and C. A is cytoplasm, yes. B is cell membrane, yes, and C is nucleus, yeah, you're right. State the name of two structures in plant cells that are absent in animal cells. Cell wall, yes, yeah, cell wall and hydroplast, yeah. State the name of one structure that is present in bacterial cells and in plant cells but absent in animal cells. It's a, uh, Cell wall not made up of cellulose. But cell, I think the plant cell wall is made up of cellulose, you're wrong. We don't really have capsules in our syllabus. Let me just check in the textbook. They often have plasmas, but plasmas plants, uh, plants do not have, right? Plasmas are not present in plant. Yeah, it is cell walls, not specifically cellulose, but we can write cell wall, not specifically cellulose because that becomes wrong as well if you write cellulose, cell wall. You can just write cell wall, I guess. Hydroplast, uh, no, because it's not present in bacterial cells. It's only cell wall. So should I go to the next question? Okay. Some cells are specialized to perform a particular function. The boxes on the left show the name of some specialized cells. Uh, draw four lines to link each specialized cell with its function. Celiated, uh, cell, yes, it's the movement of mucous. Neuron, it's the conduction of impulses. RBC, yes, blood transport, sorry, transport of oxygen. Yeah, palicid use of the cell for photosynthesis. Okay, so should I move to the next question? Okay, scientists classify organisms into groups, state one feature that is used to identify vertebrates. Yeah, they all have a backbone, you can write that. Backbone is preferred, I, you could write backbone. Vertebrates, um, um, well, backbone is much preferred. Um, you know. Segmented body, even some of the, uh, what do you call it, um? Arthropods have it too, some segmented body, some of the arthropods have it too. They won't ask for two features, commonly it's just only one, so you could write backbone, they all have a backbone. Yeah, so should we move on to the next question or any doubts? Three B, the vertebrates are classified into five groups. Figure, uh, one shows three vertebrates farm in Australia, the emove, saltwater crocodile and dark-bell platypus. Each belong to a different vertebrate group, all three animals lay eggs that develop and hatch on land. State the name of the vertebrate group to which emove belongs and give one feature of this group. No, 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 it cannot be a mammal, uh, because it's laying an egg. Mammals give birth and it has a feather, so it's a bird. It cannot be mammal because as you can see, it's laying an egg, yeah. Uh, state the name of the vertebrate group to which crocodiles belong and give one feature. Reptile, and feature is that, uh, they have scaly skin, yeah. Scaly skin and also that it lays soft-shelled eggs. Uh, the dark-bell platypus is classified as a mammal, or give evidence for and against classifying the dark-bell platypus as a mammal. So against, you could say that, uh, yeah, for, you could say that, uh, it has, uh, in the picture, how can you tell if the animal lays soft, soft, yeah. Yeah, for, it has fur and against it lay eggs, yeah, you're right. So, um, I'm moving on to the next question. This platypus has, has, have mammary glands? I don't think so because in the picture, it was laying eggs. I'm moving on to the next question. There are two groups of vertebrates which lay eggs that develop in water, state the name of these two group of vertebrates. Yeah, fish. Yeah, and amphibians, you're right. It's fish and amphibians, yeah. Complete these sentences about the kingdoms. Vertebrates belong to the kingdom, uh, belong the uh, kingdom, the animal kingdom. Animal, yeah, yeah, animal kingdom, they all have a, uh, backbone, there are, uh, there are five classes. You have five classes of vertebrates. And the other four kingdoms which include, uh, plants, Prochirhod, Protocist and, um, Prochirhod and bacteria are the same, um, tanga, it is a kingdom, tanga is a kingdom. Yeah, should we move on to the next question? Uh, show six different arthropods labeled A, B, C, D and F. Uh, state one feature that can be used to classify an animal as an arthropod. No backbone, yeah, jointed legs, yes. They all have several pairs of jointed legs and they have an exoskeleton. You could say exoskeleton and jointed legs. About no backbones, uh, yeah. But I don't think that would be in the mark scheme though. Exoskeleton would be better because, uh, they, they, they'd want you to be specific and even this textbook, you have exoskeleton and several pairs of jointed legs. Segmented body, I don't think so. They're talking about all arthropods, right? So, yeah. So I'm moving on to the next question. State one visible features that, uh, A, B, C and have, that D and, uh, D, E and F do not have. Wings, yes, they all have wings. The letters, state one visible feature that, uh, arthropods A, B and C have that arthropods D, E and F do not have. Yeah, it, it is wings. Uh, state, uh, state the letter of organism in figure one, that is a crustacean. You need to find the crustacean here. Um, yeah, you're right, E is a crustacean. Yeah, it's a crab. Next question, um, yeah, and also you need to state the reason for your answer. Yeah, you could say two antennae and you could say that they have more than four pairs of jointed legs. Yeah, you're right. Uh, Arvin and savage donut. It's okay, it's okay, and I don't think you could actually write claws. So I, should I move to the next question? Okay. One of the drawings, uh, shows an arthropod named RNA's diadymetis, I'm sorry if the pronunciation was wrong. Uh, this arthropod has a body in Uh, this arthropod has a body in two segments and it has eight legs. Uh, state the letter of the organism in figure one that shows this particular arthropod. It has body in two segments and eight legs. Yeah, it is a, it's a. You're right, it's a. State the name of the group of arthropods that includes this F. Arachnid, yeah, it's a arachnid. Yeah, next question. The phylum arthropods can be grouped into different classes. State how many classes are found within the phylum arthropod. Waiting for the answer. Uh, yeah, so phylum is basically those particular groups within each animal kingdom. So, sorry, within the kingdoms. So we have arthropod which is part of the animal kingdom. And you have insects which is one, crustaceans number two, arachnids, myriapod. So we have four, four, you can find four. So is this question clear, should we move on? Yeah. Yeah, here we have a dichotomous key question. Uh, figure one is a branching key used to identify different species of bacteria. Figure two shows the six different species of bacteria. Use the key to identify the six different species. Does the bacteria have flagella? Yes. Do the bacteria have more than one flagellum? Oh yeah, bye Arvin. So can anyone solve this question or? Top left is F. Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold it like this. The top right, uh. You mean the third one? Okay. A is the middle one. Let's see, does the bacteria have flagella? Yes. Does the bacteria have more than one flagellum? Yes. I'm not very sure about this question. This is a bit confusing. F, A, C, D, B. Okay, so you would think the first one is F. Let's check. Does the bacteria have flagella? No. Does the bacteria have a spiral shape? No. Does the bacteria form a chain? No, so yeah, it is F. So the first one is F. The second one, uh, does the bacteria have flagella? Yes, they do. Do they have more than one flagellum? Yes. Isn't it C, the second one? How does the first one not have a spiral shape? But doesn't that only have one prison, which one? Top middle. Even I am confused with this questions. Should I open the marking scheme? Okay. Okay, just a minute, I'll have to stop sharing my screen then. Just a minute, I'll just find it. Yeah. Can you all see my screen, can you all see the marking scheme? Five A, top row in order from left to right, F, A, E. So this one is F. This one is A. This one is E. C, D, D. Bottom is into flagellum and the, which one? Which one in the bottom? Yeah, okay. So should we go ahead with the next question? State the name of the kingdom that bacteria belongs to. It's brokaryote. Yeah. We have another one. Uh, state one similarity between the structure of bacteria and structure of viruses. Uh, yeah, you could say that strand of DNA. Let me check the, um. Yeah. Both contain genetic material or DNA or RNA, both contain protein. Yeah, DNA would be enough. Should I go ahead with the next question? Okay. Figure three is a photo micrograph of Vibrio cholerae, the bacterium that causes cholera. Write the formula that would be used to calculate the actual length of bacterium. This is, I think this is for chapter two. The magnification is given and, uh. Image by magnification, let's check. Actual length of bacterium is equal to image size or length divided by magnification. Yeah, you're right. It's image size by magnification. And the actual length zero point zero zero two six millimeters converted to micrometers is two point six micrometers. Should I go ahead with the next question? Yeah. This is the last question. Um, figure four shows a bacterial cell. Identify the structures labeled A to F. Yeah, A is a cell wall. B, um. Yeah, it is ribosomes and C. E is blast, let me check. Yeah, E is a blastoid, yeah. Yeah, F is strand of DNA. It's not a vacuole. D, yeah, it is cytoplasm, you're right. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, I think those are the questions in this PDF.